Good evening, everyone. This is a call to order for a committee of the whole meeting for Canal Winchester City Council. Today is September 29th, 2025, and we will begin with a good old roll call.
Miss Amos?
Present.
Miss Amos?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Busker? Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Present.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger.
Need a motion to excuse.
Oh, thank you. Motion to excuse Mr. Busker?
Second. Third.
Motion made by the Chair, I guess, second by Mr. McLaughlin. Roll call.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Miss Amos?
Yes.
Miss Amos?
Yes.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening, we have Mayor Steger, Mr. Hare, and Mr. Boggs. And I know we have a special guest from OHM this evening joining us. And we'll move right into those items for discussion, which is the reason for this meeting tonight, is we're going to discuss the zoning code updates. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hare to lead that conversation for us.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. If you recall, last year, we went through a process to select a company to assist us with update draft of our zoning code, which followed up the community plan adoption. That was one of the main objectives listed in the land use process of the community plan was to look at updating our zoning code to match up with the future land use map and the future land use categories that were identified in that plan. Through that process, we had a committee made up of residents and some elected officials that reviewed the proposals. We selected OHM advisors and ZoneCo to assist us with that process. We are now about in the midway point of that process. We've had a number of meetings with the consultants, both internally as staff and then also with a committee that's helping guide that process, a committee of residents. But we're nearing the midway point now where we're starting to get into, we've dug into a lot of the background information, started into some draft maps, things like that, but we're getting into the process. We're actually getting in the meat of the process where we're drafting the code. So wanted to have a check-in this evening with you all, give opportunity for feedback and guidance in what you hope to achieve throughout the rest of this process. So with us tonight is Kim Littleton with OHM Advisors. He's been helping us through this process up to this point, and he's going to have a brief presentation to kind of give you where we've been, and then we'll get into a little further discussion after that. Kim?
See if I've got this right first. Yes, we got it. Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate the chance to be here and update you on our progress on working on the zoning code update. As Lucas said, we're about midway through the process. Can you read okay? And we're at a point where we've done a lot of our homework, and we're now putting it together, whatever diligence, or you can call that, and now putting it together in a draft form, the semblance of a code. And this part we've been doing has more or less set up the basic parts of the code, the things that regulate land use and the form and character development. The first part I want to talk about is where we are now in the process. The three major things we've done to date in putting together the code, dealing with the diagnostic report, which is a report that basically is an audit, just like an accountant would do of your books. It's saying, this is where, you know, you've probably overstepped your bounds, or this is where there's some gaps and things, and point those out. But it's also a healthy look at the consistency between the newly adopted plan and your current code, and seeing where there are places that need to be filled in, where there are contradictions, where you're not actually achieving some of the visions you had that was put forth in the, in the plan. And quite often, we find that when we're doing codes or after someone's done a plan, is that it never had a vision. It was really put together and cobbled together to deal with media problems. Usually, historically, they started out that way about 70-some years ago, when industries were building right close to houses, and things got kind of out of hand. They've since cleaned that up, fortunately, but now we're dealing with other kinds of issues, so the issues haven't gone away. The third thing is the calibration table, and that is where we basically take a look at the community and its current state, physically, the physical environment, and take the existing code and what the, what the plan said and put together language. And basically, it's a summary of, and I'll explain, show you what that, illustrate how that was put together, a summary of the code, and we work with the summary and then work in our details. And then the fourth item in Module One, we've split this up into two major modules. One of them, first one, dealing with basically the, the physical part of the community and land uses and standards related to that. And then the second part is dealing with all the procedures, administrative procedures and rules, development standards that go along with that, your approval process, and common regulations like landscape standards, design and use standards, things like that. And then we'll get into the next steps, what we hope to do with the latter part, the last half of the, working on the code. Where are we now? We just put together that first module, and we put together a map, and we've done the calibration, but really, the, the major thing was from the plan, as Lucas said, was draft a map of existing and potential zoning districts. Based on future land use categories, that was the future land use map, the existing land use, and then the place types that were recommended in the comprehensive plan. You notice in the comprehensive plan, the districts were a little bit different than the ones in the code because they were context-oriented. And rather than calling B1, B2, B3, B4, commercial districts along a major corridor, by, you know, alphabet soup numbers, we call it corridor commercial uses. Not necessarily in this code, but I'm saying that's one way it's done. It's a corridor. It's a roadway corridor. A district is really a neighborhood. Typically, a residential district is really a neighborhood. And those neighborhood qualities, we tried to instill in them in the code, which is one of the recommendations of the plan. Then the next thing we did was the calibration, and it's an outline of the draft regulations, like I mentioned before. And it's, you know, blending what we've, what we've seen out there in other communities, not only in central Ohio, but across the country, and with the regulations that we tend to update. So the project schedule basically looks up, well, it goes from, it was four phases, four major phases. If you look at the chart, we're into the third phase, about halfway through that. We're going to start reviewing the draft modules pretty soon, Draft One. Well, go back and then summarize some of this for you, and then bring you up to what we'll be doing next. The diagnostic report, just in a little more detail. The purpose of it, and it was mostly prepared by ZoneCo, we were involved in, in helping them with a sampling of the community, of the different districts, and what was existing on the ground in some areas, especially the areas that were developed before the zoning code was put together, like where we are right now, that never had any zoning standards. The only standards they had to deal with were plaques. You know, how wide the lot was, how deep it was, and who owned it. We put streets in and dedicated, and that was it. There was no zoning before there was plating. We first evaluated the efficiencies of the current code and some of the, excuse me, deficiencies, and we, we really focused in on trying to base the code on what the objectives and the goals were from the plan, not only the way the map is organized, but also the way the, the existing plan. So the key takeaways from the planning goals, we listed, went through all the objectives, and then analyzed the plan with respect to the current code. And when you try to talk about balancing land uses, the respect neighborhoods, well, the current code is kind of outdated and restrictive. It, it doesn't tell you what you can do. It tells you what you can't do. There is a lack of transparency in what's going on, and clarity in the land use regulations. In other words, they're written in a way that's not very clear language, and that has to do with the historic character of zoning codes. They were mostly put together, and don't, don't take this as wrong, that is, attorneys, the legal profession really got involved in them based on legislation at the level, but now they've become more graphic to support that language. So that was, that was the approach that was taken before. We're trying to get codes to be more user-friendly. Second objective, encouraging diverse housing options. That's a key issue that has been going on for some time, but has peaked lately. And a lot of communities, the, the states and local communities are trying to grapple with the issue, but one of the things they found out was zoning codes was probably one of the major things that got in the way of providing a variety of housing in the community. It focused on one major type of housing, single-family, but it didn't offer enough types to allow someone to age in the community, from a small starter home up to a, a, a kind of home that, that where you would downsize into and start over again. So that's the kind of approach for the housing, for instance. And we, in Objective Three from the code, promote mixed-use walkable development. Well, in the case of the zoning code, it's more car-centric, and that included the parking regulations and as well as the subdivision regulations and how streets are designed. Objective Four and Five was focused on improving design quality and defining this community identity. And in the code, we found out with respect to that subject, there weren't any context-sensitive design standards. In other words, the design standards weren't as careful about considering what the neighborhood, neighborhood conditions were, or even what, how the neighbor, how your next-door neighbor's house was set back and how it was designed. And also, they emphasized the high-quality, consistent design and development. And one thing we're, we're working on, and it's not an easy thing to do, is take the ambiguity, excuse me, as much as possible out of the design guidelines. And we're taking a little different approach to it. I'll explain that in a minute. You've probably heard about the form-based approach to zoning codes, and I'll explain how we're introducing that into this code as a way of helping the design to move along the design standards and zoning guidelines. We also, the, the plan itself regulated only what's needed, in other words, you don't over-regulate, and you try and support desired development patterns. There are certain patterns that were brought up in the plan, walkable, mixed-use, compact development, for instance, that were felt could be furthered by the zoning code and in fact encouraged. And so we're doing that with the development standards. In the current code, for instance, there was, appeared to be an over-regulation of religious land uses, and some of the zoning districts didn't match up with one another. In other words, the logic behind having a separate district for residential and having a variety of them, rather than having just a few and deal with the primary differences between the residential, not just density, but also the character development to go along with it. Also, zoning should support, not hinder, community goals. We tried to look at ways to shorten the approval process, and we also wanted to look at barriers to building up the density of the community in certain areas, not the entire community, but in certain areas where, for instance, economic development was stressed. In the best practice number four, we also pulled off the plan's goal of prioritizing equity, resilience, sustainability, and that's emphasizing green infrastructure in the code. That isn't quite often, zoning codes done that way. Sometimes in subdivision regulations it is, with the way stormwater drainage is handled in subdivisions, but we wanted to reinforce that in the zoning code as well. And the fifth thing, ensuring accessibility and clarity in zoning, clarity in zoning regulations. As I said before, we're trying to make the document a little more user-friendly. Zoning codes are quite often accessed on the internet. Your zoning map right now is done that way, and we hope to complement this, by the way. Before I forget to mention this, we're going to be tying the zoning code into your current zoning map to make it easier for people to access information by individual parcels. So they'll know what the information, the basic information about a zoning district is by clicking on the parcel and then going further to see if there's anything going on in that particular parcel relative to council actions or planning commission actions. So that information will be done toward the end of the project when you get everything approved or worked through. So the approach we're taking to the code is really one thing that was part of the, the requirements in the proposal was, your proposal you put out, the scope you put out, was to take a look at hybrid zoning as a way of implementing some of the plan's recommendations. And a hybrid zoning code is really a combination of traditional conventional zoning standards with more form-oriented qualities of development. And the real motto, or the real thing to consider here, is that form comes before use. In other words, rather than basing the, the character design, the style, the location, the placement of the building, and parking, and things like that, before you decide those, you want to get those in place before you determine what the use is. An example of that would be your current downtown. These buildings have been here for over 100 years, 1828 is how old the district is. So those buildings have had a number of tenants, and those tenants have varied over that 128 years. But what has stayed consistent is the placement of the buildings, the way the street is aligned, the distance between the buildings on the street, how the street enclose the public realm, the public space. All those things have been in placement since then. And those buildings have been there, have been reused over and over and over again. And it's the quality of those buildings that allows that to happen. And they've adapted very well over the past hundred or so years. But today, we're building buildings that are throwaway, expendable-type buildings. So the idea is to go back to a form of development that is sustainable, that actually has some time qualities to it. So it's basically a framework that combines the elements of conventional zoning with the elements of form-based kind of zoning. And conventional zoning mostly emphasizes use-based districts and standards, whereas the form-based zoning emphasizes building form, design, and site standards as being the characteristic of the, so form first, get that down, and then you'll probably be able to create an environment in which multiple uses can occupy the same type of structure. Also, the intent is to balance the predictability of the land uses and the type of building form that you have, and also ensure compatibility with community characters. So what it really tries to do is be as prescriptive as it possibly can without being too draconian, and allow you to have a specific standard that you can rely on, or, or at least the standards themselves, as well as the opportunity to vary those standards, and to give you the chance of flexibility within those standards to, you know, make decisions without having to debate and discuss and carry on the planning process or the zoning process forever. And we took a hard look at your planned districts and said, do we need planned districts in the future? So we're evaluating right now how we do that. Because when we talked to, and I'll explain, you know, it's part of the diagnostic, when we talked to some of the development attorneys out there and representatives from the major builders, they said that, you know, the process takes a while, and we, we experienced this all over central Ohio. It's not just Canal Winchester and all the communities around. And we are looking for something that just says, hey, you can do this or you can't, and if I want to push the fold, I can get it right, and that's it. Not something that we have to spend a lot of time negotiating. So that was our goal. Hopefully, it'll work. We'll be able to have at least some clear enough standards you can, you can work with. So when it comes to developing this hybrid situation with the code, we need to be able to create a, a type of code that is based on, you know, a real understanding of the, kind of the systemic or systematic way that the different uses relate to one another and their, their relationship to each one of the districts in the community. And so, in this case, we compared the form standards for each district to the uses and as well as the definitions. And you'll see in this table here, there's, actually, those colors reflect the colors of the district that are in the zoning map. And what we, what did was on the column on the left, the, basically, the form standards are on the left. Those are the parameters. Those are the, the siting, the building placement, the parking placement, the, the building massing. Those things are listed on the side, and then each district has their own standard that deals with that. And it follows a rule that most form codes follow, and that is where you have, intensity is usually a decor your community, and it reduces as it goes out, as you expand out of the community, and that's characteristic of Canal Winchester and a lot of other cities. But also keep that in mind when you're dealing with transitioning between areas, so that you don't have a break with a 15-story building next to a, a two-story house, and avoid that kind of situation from happening. So the form standards, basically, we took that table, and what we'll be doing in the, in the next draft, which would be the public draft after we get through this Module One and the administrative draft, is to have these form standards basically outlaid in the code about how you would go about placing a parking lot, siting a building, what the heights are, how they're measured, where they're measured, what some of the flexibility is in, in the setbacks. For instance, having build two zones instead of having zones that you could build within, as opposed to having a strict setback established. Things of that sort, and allow you to visualize them. So another thing that the form codes have, or that's probably one of the, I think, one of the best things, is they're heavily illustrated. So a lot of concepts are explained in the code or brought out in illustrations to reinforce some of the standards. So in the code, we also not only did the traditional thing of looking at land uses, but we generalized the land uses into categories. So we did not end up with a list of 500 different types of land uses, including rendering plants and tanning facilities for, you know, hide tanning and things like that. There's sometimes in codes today that we've got to go through and pull out, realize we have a, a different way of, of doing things today. So those uses are listed on the side, and then we show here where they're permitted or conditionally permitted, or they're not permitted at all. And that will be transformed into several tables within the code, but this was for us to get organized. The thing that's important is that within each one of those zoning categories, we have a defined list of uses that are permitted within that particular, what is agriculture and what does it include? So what you're seeing here is instead of 500 uses, we have 15 or 20 categories, each within them, the type of uses or sub, subuses or associated uses are related to that. So you aren't confused in the table, and then you go to the definition section and find out what those are. The other thing that's attached to those are the, in the use table, we have, I'm going to go back to this one. In the use, we also have those uses, standards going with them. In other words, for office development, we have standards related to those that just relate to that specific use. So we not only have a use by a district, and this is the way codes are traditionally organized. You have uses within the district, and it's controlled by uses in the district. Then you have controls or standards within each use, and then you have controls and standards that cover the whole community. So in this case, we have standards that are related to each use. So for instance, we had, and here an office, then another example would be a home office. Well, a home office, we know, is something, it's usually in a residential neighborhood, right, because it's a home model. But we want to put standard with it because we don't want it to become a, a, a traffic nuisance in a lot of cases, and have problems with the neighbors and so on and so forth, so we put standards in there related to that. So that's the breakdown, basically, of how that works. The other thing we do is identify typologies, and the typologies are broken down by, what we mean by that are building types, park types, frontage types, that's the front of the lot, and the building included. And then we also have the building types themselves. And in this case, you see the table we put together, the list of building typologies, and then we defined each one and parameters for those. And what that'll translate to in the code is an example of this step-back building. That's, this is one we developed for the city of Upper Arlington when they were looking at Lane Avenue. And they were concerned that the higher buildings were going to cause a few problems with residents, and they didn't like that canyon effect that you get when you get buildings that are eight stories high on either side of the road. So we developed these standards and put a prototypical typology there and had illustrations of the type of character that you could see on that site. You can see it probably in the drawing on the right, probably the most, the clearest, that shows you how the first level, rehab, a lot of your retail is stepped in front, and then the residential uses and office uses stepped on the back. What that's, what's cool about that is the residential uses can have a deck or, or open space terrace area above the retail. So becomes more leasable space for the, for the building owner. So Module One, which is where we're pulling all of this together, we talked about the typologies, we talked about the land uses, we talked about the form standards. And that Module One has basically four parts to it, but they deal with Titles One, Two, Three, and Nine. And we put Title Nine glossary terms in just to start off with the terms that we thought would be associated with would be associated with most of the code, because we know people are gonna wanna know what that means and whether we can add a definition of a particular use, so on and so forth, as we get on early in the code. So, first part is introduction to the code, it basically says, here's how you use the code, here's the steps you go through. We have an illustration that goes with this that says, you know, step one, two, three, when you open the code up, what's the first thing you do? You go look for your, the piece of ground you're nursing in, you can see what its current zoning is on the zoning map, blah, blah, blah. Title Two has to deal with the zoning district standards and they cover the intent of the district, the uses that are permitted in there, the development standards and other regulations that are unique to that district. Then Title Three are those land use standards I told you about. And they're use-specific land standards that apply to specific uses. And they're really great because they get around that whole issue of conditional uses that we typically have a lot of in codes, where we require people to meet certain standards, but they have to come before a board to do that. The use standards are already there. You're not required to come to a board before that. If you meet those standards, your use follows that and a lot of them are performance-oriented type standards, like a bar, hours of operation, things like that sort. And then, of course, the glossy terms is the most exciting part of the code. If you like zoning codes, that's really the end. We put it at the end, it gets really, it's a hooker. So, and in summary, what we, this kind of pulls it all together with the zoning districts. We didn't end up with fewer district per se, but at least they're districts that indicate what the context in which they're located in. And we have the districts broken down by whether they're a rural type of district, rural area, whether they have a neighborhood type of district. Of course, we have our existing planned unit districts that are there. We have the old town districts. We've created two of them, basically, the center district, which is mostly the mixed-use retail, and then the neighborhoods surrounding that, which we call the transition district. And then we have the regional mixed-use district, which gets up to the areas where you have uses that are regionally oriented, the commercial centers that are up in there. And then the industrial districts and the institutional district and the innovation district, which is the district in which we've coined as being the one in which you would probably have uses that are oriented, a campus of uses that are more toward research and development. And then the uses parks and open space. And we want to put parks and open space in there as separate from the other ones because we really feel it's important that that become an integral part of the community and not just be a part of a development. Because you have parks right now that are near developments, but they're owned by the, by the city. But there also, there's also open space, like the golf course, that's part of a development. So, we wanted to call those out to actually show you what you do have quite a bit of open space in your community. So, just to give you an idea of how this is put together in the current Module One, each zoning district has a map with it. And this is an example, the neighborhood transition district, you can see kind of the pink color toward the center of the community. Then you have what the pattern of development is in there. It's usually buildings forward, parking toward the rear. And then you have the uses that are permitted there and where additional standards are for those. And then you have the information about how the buildings, how the site is defined, how the building is placed, how the building uses are oriented, and what the character of the building is as far as its height, mass, and other considerations. And then we have the use standards, where we've taken that table you saw on the left and we translated into specific standards for specific kind of uses. This is one that gives you an example for principal uses and the next one is for accessory uses of a structure on a lot. So, those are some of the, we homed in on some of the, some of the items, a few of the items in the code. There's a lot more to consider and we'll be doing that over the next few months. And in that, those steps involve the finishing up the administrative draft. We're polishing up Module One right now and we're building Module Two. The staff is helping us basically take the sections of the code to deal with the administrative rules and regulations, the common regulations, like, you know, the ones that cover the whole community, landscape code, lighting standards, things of that sort, going over those and giving us our feedback on that. And then we'll be working with the feedback that we got with the diagnostic and talking to developers, we'll be putting together that module. We're having another staff meeting with them to go over that. And then we'll have, following that, a final one in the winter 2026. And then we'll start working with a public draft and getting that out to you and the planning commission to review and allow you the opportunity to review the code on your own in a workshop setting, if that's how you like to do that, that's how we usually do it, and give you some time to review it. And then we would go through the, you know, the adoption process of the code and have public meetings with it. There is the mandatory process that you have to go through, like you've gone through with every zoning in the community. Same thing with when you amend a map for zoning, you're amending the text, same time, the map and text are two different things. So, we'll be putting, reviewing at the same time and amending those at the same time. Now, fortunately, in Ohio, when you do amend a map for a zoning code revision, you don't have to notify every single landowner in the city about doing this. If you have ten or more parcels that you would be zoning at one time, you can publish it in the newspaper, online, wherever you typically publish things in the community and let them know about it. That's not trying to skirt the issue, but as communities get bigger, you can imagine the city of Columbus, oh my gosh, they never get their zoning code put together if they had to stretch it out over every hearing and hear everybody in the community. But there are a lot of avenues to hear people today, so I think we ought to take advantage of those in the process. That's it from my end of it. Do you have any questions, something I've left out, something that confuses you, something you weren't expecting, was expecting?
I think if I, I've tried to sort of simplify it in my own mind about how if I'm a developer and I'm interested in doing business in Kinnon Winchester, how that might look and feel, where I don't have to invest thousands of dollars just to see if I can get it through the process. In my head, it's, I'm gonna key in a parcel and it's gonna give me this, what'd you call it, the form about, for that parcel. It'll tell me exactly what the standards are for that given piece of land. That, if I'm visualizing it right, that's a beautiful thing.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's, that's an audacious goal to get to and it's...
Our work here is done.
Yeah. And some places, we're not gonna do it, some places we'll probably be able to do it and it'll work well, but we'll wanna give it a try. But it is that, that form of certainty that every business, developers, somebody out there running a hamburger store or whatever, is looking for. And, you know, I think as much as we try and get the development review process, for instance, like you mentioned, down to the point where people still have a say, they still have an opportunity to hear, to be heard, but at the same time, they know that this process is gonna clip along and it's not gonna cost them a lot of money, they don't have to hire ten architects and five attorneys to get through it. And so, I think that's one thing we can hopefully do on this. And that certainty, as well as predictability, too. When you're putting together a development, I know I've been through this, working as a staff and as a consultant, it's hard to visualize what someone wants to do on a project, exactly what it's going to look like. And the fact that the next project we have, is it gonna have to start over and from scratch and try and explain, this is what we want in our community? Hopefully, we will have illustrated and demonstrated, this is pretty much what you would like to see in your community. And we don't have to argue about what it's going to look like when it's done, because we'll at least have enough information to make a decision on what that might be. And, and quite frankly, a lot of, a lot of the development community has been moving toward pushing these types of codes in other communities, you know, largely because, you know, they, they, they want that certainty, they don't want to have to negotiate everything about their project. You know, if I met A through Z and height, setback, so on and so forth, and it doesn't quite work, you know, I can, I can look and maybe adjust it or maybe go through the variance process. And also not have the variance process be so cumbersome. You know, there's a lot of variances where somebody has three feet, three feet, come on, it's not a problem. Well, staff can handle those. But we have a big variance, like, you know, six-story building versus a, or three-story building versus a six-story, well, that's a little different, that may impact the neighborhoods. So, those, some discretion can be allowed in that case. So, yeah, that's, that's what we're, goal we're headed for. Hopefully, we can get there.
I think one of the questions I have, I'm sorry, did you wanna ask for a question?
Go ahead.
I think one of the questions I have is, as they're going along this process, are you bringing forth information on how some of the other cities are handling or what changes you see other cities making that have been advantageous or sharing the, like, this isn't working and some of the cities are looking at readjusting it?
Yeah, as we get in the draft and we start doing the language and the process is set up, we'll start explaining what communities we've looked at or what best practices we've looked at. One thing that you, you have going on right now, which I think is, is wonderful that it's happened and I think it's about time it happened, is the city of Columbus has decided to update their zoning code. You've probably read about that. They're not doing it, they're doing it in kind of in Modules Two. They started off with certain areas of the community and certain districts and worked on those before they went on to other ones. I think that was probably political as much as it was practical for them to do. And they have, they have worked with, the firms they have worked with do these types of codes, the hybrid codes, and have been doing them for ten, fifteen years, ever since the concept was, was first developed. And they've been around for a while and they're gonna, they've brought some very good practices and ideas in putting together that code. And I think some consistency with what they're doing, because they're your next-door neighbor, is really helpful for the development community, because you wouldn't believe what it's like to be a developer and have to know every single zoning code, or at least a zoning attorney in the whole region. If they started getting a little closer to being similar in how they approach things, not, not the exact language, but say, maybe it is a form-based type code and it is a hybrid code, maybe that's the way things are, and it seems to be. I've been working in Hilliard on drafting sections of one, Dublin's already gone through the process, we worked in Whitehall and did that. You know, we've, we've worked in a number of communities online in central Ohio, but different parts of the state, and also up in Michigan and our other, other states that we work in. And it's starting to, the tide is starting to shift and communities are moving toward that. And I think largely because the development community is, is, is kind of working with the charge on it. And the housing thing has brought to a peak, the housing issue, you'd think, the housing issue has brought to a peak, because they're realizing that years and years of single-use zoning everywhere and only allowing that in some communities, I'm saying your community does that, but there are some communities that do that, has really deprived people of housing, that they could, they could reach at least accessible housing, those attainable houses. And who has a lot of catch-up to do, but hopefully, in the next five, ten years, it'll start to ease off. But, you know, housing always has these booms and busts. This one just happens to be kind of an unfortunately, or bad bust. So, that's, that's the thing that's probably brought this to everybody's attention and you're ahead of the curve, which I, I'm really glad to see that you built on the momentum of the plan to start working on the code. The paint hasn't dried yet and that's fine. I think that's great because as this issue on the top of people's mind, it doesn't lag and it's not slowing down at there. If their projections are correct about central Ohio, every community's gonna feel it, across, not just Columbus.
And then I have one more question, but it may be more Lucas or Mr. Boggs. After the code is approved, is there a timeframe that we have to wait before it's official or is it the moment that we voted in that it becomes official? Anybody who submitted it, is it thirty days? So, thirty days from the day we voted, so anybody that submits before it becomes official goes under the old set of rules, correct? Can you stay somebody until the new set of rules? Just asking, like...
You know the answer.
Well, you never know.
I mean, we could just say no, 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 but that's not a good practice.
It's not good practice.
We wanna let the attorney legally answer the question.
No, because he's gonna say no.
Well, then you know the answer.
Right.
Yeah, so, you'd have at least thirty days. I mean, in the ordinance, you could say, if you wanted to make it January first or some kind of set date, you could do it that way as well. But until it becomes effective, anybody who has submitted or is submitting before that effective date would be governed under today's code and not what you're, you're adopting. And it's, it's fraught with potential legal risk and probably reputational risk to put a moratorium in place while a code is being considered.
Oh, yeah, definitely a moratorium, that's a, that's a yucky word. That's a bad word.
But then anytime you stop taking applications, whatever we call them, that's what it can be called.
No, not saying, don't take applications, but, but letting people know that I'm, so years ago, we had changed the residential standards and we did have a company who had already started the process. And in the middle of it, when we changed our standards, like, and this was their agreement, they agreed to do ours. It still didn't go through, which is dumb, but that's hindsight's, you know. But they did agree in the middle of it to change to our new standard, so I didn't know if that was a conversation piece that you could have with somebody?
I think it goes along with some of the stakeholder engagement that's referred to, thinking of the example of like the city of Columbus doing their zone-in plan, where certain places in the city were the starting points for those rezonings. If, if, if I had a property in one of those places and I was getting ready to submit a, you know, rezoning request for that, there would be a conversation saying, if you can wait six months, we'll have this zone in and it'll allow you to go through, you know, just, just as is described, so...
Okay, well, that, that more accurately defines what I'm looking for, so, okay, thank you.
There are many cases like that currently.
Thank you.
Where developers are waiting to apply until the zoning, the new zoning code is adopted, because they're looking at our community plan, lining up with what they feel the vision of that plan is, lining up with the land use categories that are in that plan, and they're just gonna hold their application so that they potentially don't have to go through the process of going through a planned district rezoning over the next three or four months, when they can wait, you know, potentially six months and then apply then.
Okay, and that's more along the line of what I was thinking, so I feel, I feel like I've gotten a good understanding. Thank you both.
Mr. Littleton, does the, does the process allow for a likelihood of a variance? So, let me use setbacks as an example. We've seen a few of those that have come, you know, across our desk. Does the process indicate that the likelihood of you asking for a variance in this particular element is not gonna happen? Or, I guess, is there a probability that a variance will go through if you ask for a fifty-foot setback where it's thirty-five?
I, I think it's, the variance situation, we're trying to get to the point where you...
Don't have them.
Yeah, try to reduce them. And the point, the point, the reason for that is, is allow staff some discretion, just like they are now with the draft code being put together and saying, please wait, rather than setting up a moratorium, et cetera, et cetera, block development. There, with that kind of approach to it, it's saying, if you have a variance for this particular standard, for instance, it's a setback, as you mentioned, that's a pretty common one, right? There's a certain, and we're, we're working, we'll be working with them on that, what, what range, what flexibility they can have to make the decision about the approval of that variance on their own, without having to come before the appeals board or... And that will hopefully reduce the number of applications that those boards get. And the idea is, we'll work really hard to get it down to administrative level, because I know most developers would like to deal with the staff, because they don't have to have a public meeting. They probably like you, they think you're great people, on the same side. The public is something that's usually kind of probably less than desirable to work with. Zoning attorneys, I know, make their living doing that and that's why developers hire them, which is great, I suppose. But we're trying to make the code to the point where you won't need a zoning attorney to have to interpret the code to get what you want. Because if you want what... code to get what you want. Because if you want what's in the plan, then you should be able to get it by complying with the zoning code. And that discretion in setbacks can be a percentage, it can be a distance, it could be a bunch of different things. And that would reduce those things from coming in. And there's a lot of ways that can be applied in other cases, like conditional uses, as they come through. If it's only a, you know, a minor-type situation, then the staff would approve it. In the case of site plans and subdivisions, same thing, rather than having a site plan that is for a, I don't, probably, you know, somebody's infilling on a property that's already had the same use there, and it's, they're just re-adding a parking lot on, and they're changing the parking use, because then they have to have more parking. Does that require having to go through the whole process? No, they can probably, as a minor site plan, submit that, staff review it, and then they go on, do their stuff. So, that minor-major kind of component splits it between the board review and the staff review. And we'll try and apply that in many situations as we can, to help that out. And I'm glad to see you're interested in that, because there are some communities that just don't want to let go of any of those decisions, and they've got, has their finger on every one of them. But, it's, you know, it's, it's good to see, because I think you'll, you'll, your caseload, or the board's caseload, and other boards' caseloads will hopefully go down with that, as we do it. You know, and there are some communities that go to the point of having, like, for instance, for their downtown review, they have an architect, and he's the one that decides what goes on, and he makes his recommendation to the board, boom, it moves right through. So, those things, there are ways to ease those things up, and make them move along a little faster.
And as part of the process, we provided logs of all our cases for the last 20-plus years, and so they could look at what was being requested most for variance requests. I can tell you, lot coverage is the number one. The number one requests we get from people. And it's how our code defines lot coverage. Things like swimming pools are considered impervious surface, so that counts as lot coverage. So, we're trying to take those codes, look at what variance has been granted, and change our standards so that there's a reasonable increase in the amount of coverage, or the way it's defined, to eliminate those deck setbacks, things like that, that, you know, a lot of our residents have to deal with, that, you know, typically is, is more of a rubber stamp from planning and zoning commission, but it's still costing the applicants, you know, in some cases, hundreds of dollars, time, all those things, where it could better be spent if we just revise the code to what we've typically been granting variances for.
Yeah, and the concept of lot coverage has gotten more complicated with, with the need to reduce the amount of impervious surface on properties. We don't have too much runoff, we don't have the, the groundwater pollution, everything else that occurs with it, and to slow it down, for instance. So, those things enter into it. So, there are trade-offs you can make on how you deal with the lot coverage. And in urban areas, you can't avoid it. In suburban areas, it's easier to manage, to some extent, because you have more land to manage in it. But, you know, he's right. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where if we get some agreement or consensus in that particular area of the community, it's not gonna be the same standard that you would have out in, you know, in some of your housing developments. So, that's critical. That's critical, as far as giving that flexibility to people.
So, Mr. Littleton, and Mr. Hare, maybe you can help, too. First, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for walking us through all this information. It's a ton of work, and I appreciate your partnership in helping us get here. One of the things, I guess, I've had some sort of resident antenna kind of firing off this evening, is I just kind of try and, I sit back and take a broader look at what we're talking about. And some of the things that, you know, if I were a resident tuning in, what I'm hearing is, we want to be more developer-friendly, we want less resident input. These are things that, you know, if you're just hearing certain words, these are key words that I'm hearing tonight, right? And I know, we've talked about, there's a resident review process, we're gonna get resident input, but there's a part of this conversation, and I just want to be careful of it, it sounds like we're, we're wanting less public input. And I don't think that's the case, Mr. Hare. It's a, let me, let me, my question, I'm gonna provide my answer, and you can either confirm or deny what I'm thinking, is the answer to my question. I think what we're trying to do, though, is define what we want our community to be better and upfront, so that it's a known quantity going in. So, if we want all brick fronts, you know that going in. We want patios, we want front porches on every home, which is kind of in our code now, but it's in there. But, if we're, that's in the code, that's what we want. It's in there, it's a known quantity, right? It's not, and again, I think, I just want to be clear, it's not that we're going through this process to concede power or, or make it easier to develop here, a little bit, but within reason, right? We're still gonna have standards, we're still gonna want resident input, but at the same point, we want to make it so that everybody sort of is working from the same page, I think, is, is what the outcome of this should be. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
Okay.
So, you know, we look back, we're guided by what was defined in the plan.
Yes.
Which was a lot of public engagement, you know, over a thousand different people provided feedback on, you know, what, what they wanted to see as the future of our community. So, that's, that's what's guiding us. And when you look at our core values, it's, you know, the first core community values, a community with small-town charm complemented by building design context and scale.
Yes.
So, what we're doing is, we're setting the building design, the context, and the scale. That's being set in those building typologies, kind of the form standards that we have. And so, the expectation is that if you have a piece of property, it's zoned for that district, we set up the design context and scale of that district, you meet those requirements, that you can then redevelop that site in accordance with the zone. So, there wouldn't be as much, you know, requirements to go through all the public hearings and all that, if you are meeting those standards. Now, if you want to vary from those standards, or if you're doing something that's out of line with the zoning, then yes, there would be public input, all those things.
And, and Will, I, I've sat in on the two meetings that the stakeholder, the committee members were involved in, and there, there was never a discussion to make it easier for development. It was always to make it more clear.
And that's, and that's a fair push. I think, as, as the one who's getting it for the first time this evening, though?
Yeah, understandable.
Right? Like, you could see where, if I'm tuning in online to this tonight for the first time.
Yeah, there's.
There's just some buzzwords that you might hear that make it sound like.
Yeah.
What are, okay.
Biggest things, they want the developers to be able to understand, but they also want me and you, who want to put a deck on our porch, to be able to, to be able to look and say, oh, here's an illustration, this makes sense.
Here's how the deck works.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, Mr. Hare, thank you for the context, also the background of the guiding principles that, that were defined by the residents in the community plan, which are also helping to steer the ship for OHM. So, again, I just want to, Mr. Littleton, thank you. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot with that, at all, or Mr. Hare. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're transparent in the way that we're, we're having this conversation, so the residents, if there were questions, understand, the guidance from this is not, you know, yes, we're talking to developers and trying to understand what helps, but at the same point, while we're having those conversations with them, we still understand the guiding principles of our own, nor start from our document. And we're just trying to fit those puzzle pieces together. So, I just want to make sure that was heard.
Yeah, I will mention another item that I think, you know, maybe become more of a hot bus issue with residents in the future, is that, you know, as part of the objectives in the community plan, we talk a lot about housing, and the missing metal housing, and having more variety of housing types. And so, we do have recommendations in this plan, that areas that are now only permitted for single-family zoning, that those would have multi-family zoning be permitted in them. So, duplexes, triplexes, accessory dwelling units, things like that, where we're adding gentle density. So, you know, the context, the scale of that development is gonna be similar to the houses around it, but it's not going to be strictly a single-family neighborhood. Those are kind of the transition districts that you see on those maps.
Well, and I have duplexes in front of our neighborhood, at the front of Hocking, right? There are duplex homes that are rentable at the front of, at the front of our neighborhood.
And floorplexes, when you pull up.
Yeah.
And, and several units right around there with ADUs, you know. So, as, you know, we've talked.
Yeah, I think that's what came up in our, our committee meeting, is we asked a lot of questions of the people on the committee about accessory dwelling units, and where are those appropriate, and, you know, what type of issues do you foresee in a number of, you know, parking, and neighborhood conflicts, and all those things, trying to determine that. So, I can see that those would potentially be people, you know, they may have a little hesitation over adding density in their neighborhoods.
Sure.
And that's not everywhere. If you see on that map, you know, most of our city is planned district, so we, we can't change the types of uses that happen, and, you know, the larger subdivisions that are here, but along some of our corridors, our older corridors or older housing, you know, those areas that we're considering transition districts.
Does someone from the landmarks commission sit on this committee?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that's another, that's another item, is we're looking at expanding the landmarks review boundary. So, that is defined in the, in the community plan. We will be extending that to additional areas, so there'll be a zoning, there'll be two zoning districts that encompass that, that landmark area, one that's more focused on commercial development and major corridors, and one that's more focused on residential.
So, what about like, the, the preservation district? Is that something that might be considered as part of the Old Town eventually, or?
Yeah, so right now, we have Old Town zoning district, so we'll have a very similar item. So, the Old Town zoning district encompasses the preservation area. And so, what I'm saying is, we'll extend that out to include additional properties, and that zoning district will apply to those properties.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for the work. Thank you for the time this evening to sort of...
My pleasure.
Bring us along on the journey. I know, we have some members of council who have been along for that ride already, but certainly the rest of us appreciate the opportunity to catch up. What is the next steps for community? Is there a part of this that goes for a public review?
We, we will have a draft public code that will be out in a few months' time.
Yeah.
So, we're working on the administrative draft right now. We're kind of in the, the point where we're starting to write the actual sections of the code. So, all those calibration tables and all that, that's what we've been working on up to this point. We're at the point where we're drafting sections of the code, you know, terms, glossaries, all the, all the fun things that Kim talked about. You know, once we get through that administrative draft, then there'll be a public draft that's available that we'll, we'll put out for public feedback.
Okay. All right. And you said that'll be maybe a few months from now?
When, I think, winter, yeah, wintertime. I don't know if that'll be yet this year, or probably early next year.
Okay.
Nice fireplace meeting.
Thank you very much for that, a timing update as well. Any other questions from members of council?
Did you come from Michigan?
No.
No.
I mean, down to this meeting, or do I come from?
Well, no, you're, one of the companies that's in this.
They, they have an office there as well, but they're, they have an office downtown Columbus as well.
Yeah, we have an off, several offices in Michigan, Tennessee, Pennsylvania, Indiana. We're kind of, we're a regional firm, so a lot of our, we work, generally speaking, we work in communities, the average size is about the size of Canal Winchester, 20, 25,000, and 10, 15,000. We specialize in those.
Is there a community that you would, if we wanted to look and see how it's all laid out, and what the user experience might be, is there a community that is complete that we could look at?
Oh, geez. There are communities not, how can I say it? In, in central Ohio, the growth and development is central all the usual, because, you know, 50-some years ago, 60-some years ago, the city made an agreement with the suburbs that they were required to limit their growth, so Columbus could expand around them. That didn't happen in cities like Cincinnati and Cleveland and other areas, so the development pattern's a lot different in Columbus than it is in other places. And I think, I think when you get to some areas like, you know, other parts of the country, one, one in which I worked in is a really nice area that has some really nice develops in, is Franklin, Tennessee. There's development there that started out as a traditional-type development, mixed-use kind of development, and it's evolved into just a great little community. Actually, there's a new development that's in central Ohio, just to kind of think of it. Have you been up to Evans Farms?
What is it?
Lewis Center, Evans Farms.
That's the other side of the world, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, it's like, two hours away or something?
Yeah, it's about an hour away, I guess, about an hour away from here. But, if you, if you make it up there in the Lewis Center area of Polaris, yeah, you can probably go around the belt, Polaris, somewhere along there. No? Okay. Well, if you make it up there, I highly recommend you see what they've done there, and that's something that's local. The Franklin, Tennessee one is older, is fully developed, but this one's still in the development process. And what they did was, they, they did what traditionally happened in the community, the residential grows, and then they start pulling in the multifamily, because they have to have the rooftops to support, excuse me, the retail in the community. But, they've done a very good job of increasing density without sacrificing the quality of the product. They have mixed the housing types really well, so you have townhomes, multifamily and with single family. They have built-in alley situations in the development. They've tried to follow a, you know, more intense development toward the core of the community, and move out, as you move out toward the edges, the lots get bigger, and this is within one development. They get more rural in size, you know, half-acre to one-acre lots. So, they, they follow the principle of development, and they actually attach themselves to an old railroad village, actually Hamlet, that started in the, in the period in which farmers would bring their stuff to the silos and Heathermark, all that stuff. At Lewis Center, there's an actual little village there, and they've basically been an expansion of that village. So, they didn't plop the thing out in the middle of nowhere. They actually nestled it up against an existing village, and it has its own little commercial strip, and very tiny, but it's, it's really quaint, very walkable. And, so this development is still in progress. They're still working out the retail, they're still filling it up, but they have a mixed-use commercial toward the front, and you go toward the back of it, there's the housing units. So, I highly recommend it, you know, you can take a bus trip up there, everybody hop in, to take a tour. I'm sure the developers, designers are out of Cincinnati, I can't remember whether, I think the developers also are out of Cincinnati. And it's been going on for the past, I think, eight years, six or eight years. So, take a look at it. I think it's well-done for a new development out in the middle, you know, on that green, green field side. Do you see it on there?
Yeah, yeah, I pulled it up.
You see the layout there? Isn't it different?
Yeah. EvansFarmOH.com.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's really kind of neat. Mr. Moore, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna tell Ms. Amick that, while maybe not identical communities, there, there are some communities that we referred to when we were looking at different companies that we were gonna do the, do this plan with, who had really good examples of what we want the zoning code to look like. I'm sure you probably still have that list.
I do.
That he could forward you, just so you could kind of see an end result of the actual code, with the illustrations and the, and the wording and everything.
Yeah, so, OHM and ZOCA worked together on multiple communities zoning codes, so we had, they provided a lot of examples, and didn't get even on what that looks like.
One I might pitch is the, the city of Rehnsberg came to us after we worked on their plan, and with ZOCA, we put together their code right afterwards. The key part of that was the fact, they, the city of Columbus putting into their plans for multimodal development, and they're in the process of looking at the corridors as being the place where they were gonna grow, and that they were envisioning a bus rapid transit. So, we designed the code to facilitate growth and development along the Broad Street, Main Street corridors, and it's gonna be one of the first ones that gets the development done, starting in the, out at the edge of town, and moving, it's moving in toward the, the center part of Rehnsberg. But, that's gonna start in the next year or two. So, we said, you know, if you want to build a corridor that's gonna have buses going down, put the buildings up close to the building as they redevelop and infill, start making connections, you know, with the, the stations that are gonna be along that line, and everything else. So, that code was designed to accommodate a mass transit approach to development in the community.
Anything else this evening from members of council? All right. Thank you all again. I appreciate your time. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion paid by Ms. Amis, second by Mr. Moore. Roll call?
Ms. Amis?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Ms. Amy?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Mobacklin?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Littleton.
Thank you, I appreciate it, sir.